Welcome to Banking on KC. I'm your host, Kelly Scanlon. Thank you for joining us. On this episode, Bill Dietrich, the president and CEO of the Downtown Council of Kansas City, which is a nonprofit organization that supports downtown growth, will talk to us today about Kansas City's progress on some of the economic development and community development projects and initiatives that are underway to create a more vibrant and sustainable downtown. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you for the invitation, Kelly. It's a pleasure to be here.
Well, as I said before we started, what a great time to be in Kansas City. So many good, positive things happening. Happy to have you here today to talk about some of those. Let's go back a bit. When I interviewed you in 2020, you were really bullish on the population growth in the downtown area. You also were talking about the streetcar expansion, the development of the 18th and Vine Entertainment Districts. So I want you to take us forward four years later and bring us up to date on all of those. And, you know, have they progressed as you thought they would? What impact are they having?
The pandemic was not kind to any of us. In 2020, we were moving forward with a lot of different projects. And when, when the pandemic hit, for instance, a number of hotel projects were going forward stopped. People left their offices. There was that doom cycle kind of scenario that the media and academics were pitching about downtowns. And in our case, and in many cases, but I think we were in a very good place. That didn't happen in Kansas City. We collect a lot of metrics. We measure everything. And we do a lot of historic data, but we also have a new data source, which is called Placer AI, which lets you track mobile device use in real time. And so we can really get very accurate about how many people are visiting downtown, how many employees are back into downtown, and if data like that. And it's been very encouraging. If we look at the visitor and tourism industry, we are really at about 10.5 million visitors in the first half of this year, which is 95% of our kind of pre-COVID numbers. So you can see a real recovery that's happened there. On the employee base, we have about 122,000 employees in downtown. And of those, 76% are back in the office at least three days a week. And give you a sense of, we think there's something to do with commute patterns and density. Within two miles of downtown, 100% of those employees are back. When you look at a five mile circle, it drops down about 86. When you go farther out, it drops down about 70.
Yeah, it makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, it's that commute. I think that commute element comes into play. And fairing very well to our suburban partners and allies, they're around 56% kind of repopulating the office market. And that's really important to me because that's what keeps the retailers alive, restaurants alive, that kind of vibrant cultural environment that we've built downtown moving forward. So we're really thrilled to see that level of recovery. On the visitor and tourism, that puts us third in nation in recovery of percentage of base, just behind a couple of cities, which is really strong.
That's extraordinary.
And on the employee recovery back in office, that places us in the top four cities in America. So I think that the nature of Kansas City lends itself to those kind of, that kind of recovery because we had diversified our economy, we had diversified our employee base. Interesting, I'll kind of jump in a little bit on the residential, focus a little bit on the residents, because residents drive everything in downtown. And it's a real new phenomenon last 15 years. During COVID, we added 3,300 people in the downtown area. And again, there was this doom cycle that everyone was going to flee downtown. And I think counterintuitively, the exact opposite happened in downtowns across America. Because of the multiple points of ingress and egress, the multiple venues, you actually lowered your chances of COVID. Where I live in a suburb and I go to Costco with 10,000 of my closest friends, you kind of create these little super, what we used to call them?
Super spreaders.
Super spreader events. And so we, we actually continue to add residents during, during the COVID period. To date, we have about 33,000 people live downtown, which again, is really, really a strong number. We have about 1,400 units under construction today. My concern with, with residential growth is really what's in the pipeline. Well, there were some policy initiatives made a number about four years ago, which put some goals for the city to promote affordable housing, which we all need and we all want. But the specific strategy isn't working. And so we're hoping to work with Andrea Boog, Council One Boo, is moving forward with an economic development strategy for the city, which really takes a look at the city's approach and prioritizing what's important to it. And we're involved in that dialogue, and we hope to raise the housing issue. Because if you think about that, that earlier stat where people living within two miles of downtown are 100% back in the office, that's a real competitive advantage to grow the employee base, to add new companies, and it's driven by housing. So we need to prioritize housing. We need to green tape it, streamline it, make it easier for developers and financial institutions and the design build community to continue to do infill development in downtown. We have lots of infill opportunities left. So we hope that we can work with the city and revise the policy to kind of enable that pipeline to come back and fill up, as well as come up with some successful strategies to achieve affordable housing. There are pressures in downtown. Values go up, rents go up. So there's always pressure on affordable housing. You have to be very thoughtful and intentional to retain the housing you have, as well as add to it. And we think there's a very specific strategy out there that will help us advance that. And it's critically important because we think housing for all is one of the real advantages to downtown. You know, someone coming out of high school or college can live downtown, some in the service industry, a waiter or chef, or, you know, there's alternatives for the minor downtown that are not auto dependent. Helps them put that eight grand, 10 grand a year in their pocket, you know, for their education. So we think it's really, really critically important that we have a continuum of options for people to move up to as they advance their lives and their careers or downsize and that whole ecosystem of housing.
What are some of the big projects that you have on your dashboard right now?
Well, big projects on my dashboard are projects such as the South Loop Project, which is to build a four block park over I-670 from Wyandotte to Grand. It's a space that doesn't exist in our community. It'd be operated by a 501(c)(3) conservancy that did nothing but program that park 24/7 during 65 days a year. So there are concerts, there are community events, there are neighborhood events, there are book fairs, there are health fairs, there's yoga classes, there's rock climbing, there's dog parks, there's anything you think of that creates an active urban environment. It's a $220-plus million project. Today, we've raised about $174 million.
So more than two thirds, about?
Yeah, with great expectations to break ground here in early spring. I guess we're not breaking ground because we're building something over again. We're making ground.
But you're gonna start it.
We're gonna start in, in the spring, if all goes according to plan. We have a very ambitious timeline to have, to have at least the superstructure in one or two of the blocks done by FIFA World Cup. So you think about connecting the Lowe's Hotel to the central business with all the great amenities going on. It'd be a wonderful experience for people. And it says, I think, great things about our, about our communities. We're working that in partnership with the City of Kansas City and Port KC. So it's a kind of a three party partnership, which is working really well together. So I'm very confident you're gonna see that new investment come. And it's important, it's a, people don't understand, it's like Clyde Warren Park in Dallas, if you've been there, or the Gene Lahey Park in Omaha, which are two great contemporary examples of how these become gathering places for your whole community, for visitors, for tourism. We have a real commitment to STEAM programming, working with local public school districts to make sure that the park is built in a way that if they're studying ecology or environmentalism or water control and flow, that you have an opportunity to be that curated experience for them in the park.
Exactly. You have a practical project that you're working on, and it's not just a bunch of textbooks and numbers on computers that you're, yeah, you see it, you see what you're applying that, it's growing before your eyes.
You know, other projects that are really important to us, of course, are the downtown potential for the Royals to make their new stadium and headquarters in downtown, as well as a ballpark district around it. That's a couple billion dollars of new investment that that conversation's ongoing.
It is, and it's just been in the news again in the last couple, we got with the Washington Square area.
Yeah, exactly right. We believe that there are multiple sites that work downtown. So we're kind of site agnostic. But we think downtown helps the Royals be as successful as they can be, and is the best return for our community. Because of the ability, like these kind of unique assets and investments feed off each other.
Oh, definitely.
And when you look at the new current stadium down on the riverfront, which what a great success story. That is now fortunate. We are in our community to have the first professional women's sports facility built here in our community.
It is incredible. Yes.
It just says such great things about our community. It's two kind of fun facts I'd learn. Some of the away teams are having their home games at our facility because it's, it's more financially successful for them. As well as this year, which is really kind of neat, so we get more games here than just, which is a lot of fun. As well as this year, the championship game will be played at CPKC Stadium. And that's really exciting. But those kind of investments feed off each other, and they spark new development. One of the things, because that investment is there, and because the mixed use projects, $800 million is going forward on the riverfront, which is, isn't it great to see the riverfront finally come back after so many generations?
It is so much fun. It's looking so good down there. But, you know, you talk about how this is all intertwined. And it strikes me as you're talking about all this going back to increasing the residential density. When, when you have all of these different amenities within walking distance of downtown, that makes it a more attractive place to live, too.
And that is a strategy. You know, every great downtown needs 10 great destinations. And the richer we make that environment, the more fun, the more exciting, the more diverse, the more successful we're going to be in attracting new businesses and new investment. And one of the things I'm really thrilled about is that our downtown today remains an affordable downtown. Now, again, there's great pressures. It won't stay affordable if we don't be very thoughtful and conscious and intentional about helping it stay affordable. But it still is. And we have over 2,500 units, which are affordable units in our downtown out of the total, you know, kind of inventory of about 17,000 units and growing. And we're also the most diverse neighborhood in our community, which I think says just great things. And that's diversity of ethnicity. We're pretty much split 50/50 men to women. So the demographics are very diverse, which is one of the strengths. It really enables us to offer something for everyone. So more of these assets that we put in the marketplace, the more attractive it becomes for folks to live there, as well as to work there. The other projects I would mention, one would be the streetcar expansion. You see that going forward. You know, I don't think people along the line from the Union Station to UMKC have any idea what's coming their way. Private capital follows infrastructure investment. In downtown, when we did the $100 million streetcar starter line, we did a transportation-oriented development plan around it. So we're telling the market, here's the kind of investment we'd like to see. And so you can be more focused and targeted on what, what you're attracting. And that's true going through Midtown down to the Plaza, as well as UMKC. By having that TOD plan in place, little more than $3 billion in investment have followed along that streetcar line. And when we talk to those developers, it's usually one of two answers. It's, look, I'm a national developer. I look around the country where people are doing these kinds of investments. I come and see if there's an opportunity. If there is, I come and invest. But for your streetcar, I wouldn't even look to you. So there's that kind of group of folks. And the other ones are, it really heavily influenced my decision to say yes. And that's, and it's been, I think, from an economic development strategy, successful, because a lot of that investment's not from our community. So we're attracting new capital to our marketplace that wasn't here prior to that. That trend is going to continue right down Main Street. And it's going to continue at the right size and appropriate scale. There's lots of great organizations like Midtown KC who are kind of working right now with KC, with the Streetcar Authority and others. So it'll be very kind of right-sized. But you're gonna see that infill happen. And you're gonna see, you know, a more mixed use residential retail kind of investment come in, which now are empty lots. And so from an economic development perspective, great things are coming. The other one I always like to throw out to people is, you know, imagine you're staying here on the Plaza in a beautiful hotel, and you can jump on a free streetcar, ride to Midtown, have lunch at a fabulous restaurant, jump back on, go to a concert at T-Mobile Center or an event at the current stadium, and not need a car.
And the, and the streetcars are free, too. So you don't have to worry about additional transportation costs. And, and just even if you're not here visiting on the Plaza, to attract people from the suburbs to downtown, people always like, even with the stadium, the possibility of a stadium downtown, where are we gonna park? Where are we gonna park? But the, further the streetcar expands, that'll be able to take some of that pressure off of parking.
And give us more alternatives for like park and ride opportunities. So drive in from the suburbs, but park here, jump on the streetcar, ride downtown where, you know, where you'll have less expensive rates in the suburbs or the kind of, not the suburbs because we're still in the urban car, but, you know, in the neighborhoods south of downtown. What we've seen downtown, and we were really surprised by this with the streetcar project, we actually have greater ridership on the weekends than on weekdays.
Because the people coming in from the outskirts.
People coming in from the outskirts. They're parking at River Market and with the family and for fun, they go to the market, then they ride down Union Station, or, you know, Crown Center where the, you know, the aquarium is. But it's really becoming a destination connector. So it really enables people to discover their city in a way that they haven't before. Another project that is in infancy, but the time is right for it, is to come up the redevelopment plan for Grand Street. If you look at Grand Street, it should really be our Michigan Avenue. It should be our state street, and it isn't. But there are a large number of really good property owners along that line who are looking forward to working with, as well as the city, to come up with, with a development plan that really overlays, you know, what tools are here today, where are the sites that we are prioritizing for infill development. And again, I guess my buzzwords for the year is thoughtful and intentional. If we're very thoughtful and intentional about this, we can see that, we can build on the investment that we've seen happen on Main and Walnut, based on the streetcar over to Grand. And, and that's for me, that's Grand really from the river all the way to south of Crown Center. You know, Washington Square Park, which we mentioned as a potential ballpark site, needs revitalization. It's, it's a space that is not conducive to activity.
Well, and Blue Cross is exiting that area, a major employer.
And we're thrilled to have Blue Cross in the Central Business District. They're gonna add, add to that density. They're gonna help support kind of the retail and the vibrant cultural arts community and environment that's going forward today. And, and I think it's the headquarters, it sends, you know, very strong signals to the national and regional kind of marketplace that downtown is a good place for kind of headquartered properties like that. So we're really excited to see that. As an aside, coming into the marketplace, I think early next year is when we start populating.
Yeah, it's coming up, or whatever.
Goes by fast.
With all of this going on, I'm curious to know how some of the more recent national and international spotlight events, for example, the NFL Draft, the World Cup, those are just a few of them that are coming up, or hopefully we've got another Super Bowl coming up. But how are those kinds of spotlight events driving downtown development?
What they do is they bring millions of new potential customers to Kansas City and to our downtown. It exposes people, you know, to an environment that they may not have realized has changed as much as it has. And it's so important to expose people to the product.
Right.
It makes a huge difference when people come. My friends and visitors and relatives from the coast, west coast where I'm from, come to Kansas City. I think they have an expectation of eastern Colorado or western Kansas or something, and they go, wow, this is really pretty cool.
Yeah, I have friends from LA who've said the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. And I love, because like having the Power and Light District there is wonderful for these mega events.
Oh, it's so fun to see it on national television with everybody down there celebrating during those events. Yeah.
And I don't think that the Power and Light District being the official site for the FIFA World Cup a couple of years ago, on the US side, I don't think that hurt us in the bit. Because it was like, what commitment? So it exposes millions of new people to our downtown. And I think that's really kind of an important part of it. The one I really love is that we've secured the Big 12 Tournament, men's and women's through 2031, I think it is, seven years, as well as the wrestling title, which is by visitors, larger than the basketball tournament, which is kind of amazing.
Really? The wrestling?
I think that's what Kathy Nelson told me down at the CBA and Sports Commission. Thank you. Yeah, it's kind of surprising, but apparently the people, you know, people travel, right, from all these Midwest universities?
Kind of like the, the race car folks who, who just go all over the country and follow their favorite drivers.
And follow their favorite drivers. Yeah, exactly. And I think that's so cool. And I really appreciate that because these are regional, these are folks from Des Moines, from Oklahoma City, from all these places that come and have a great time in the Power and Light District during the event. It's a real activity generator and people generator. You can't buy the kind of public publicity that Kansas City has gotten over the last year with FIFA World Cup. I mean, having, I just saw today in the paper, Jason Travis Kelsey signed a $100 million podcast contract.
Oh, for heaven's sakes, I saw that, too. My gosh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Taylor Swift doesn't hurt either.
No, it sure doesn't.
But you know, you never know when momentum comes. You don't know how long it stays with you, and you don't know when it leaves. So ride it while you have it. And these national events and the great work they're doing at Sports Commission and Visit KC to attract these kind of venues will have an indelible effect on our community. FIFA will be, I think, the largest event ever hosted by Kansas City.
It doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, it doesn't surprise me either. It's, it's a global event. Being a host city actually added to that.
You mentioned something a few minutes ago. You brought up about the safety. You hear that in various parts of our city, the safety, you know, go out at night and, and enjoy all of the wonderful things that you've talked about, the events, the restaurants and so forth. But people won't do it if they don't feel safe. What are you doing to address that issue?
Yeah. And the, the crime spike post-COVID is very real throughout our entire city, as well as almost every city in America. And I'm not even sure why that is. I mean, I think there's a probably complicated matrix of reasons that come together to have given this, this kind of spike, but concerns us very much. And again, we track the metrics in our greater downtown area really closely on crime. And that spike that we've seen is mostly crimes against property. So it's breaking into a car or, you know, that, those kinds of, those kinds of crimes. Otherwise, the stats very low downtown. It's a very safe downtown. But you only have to look at St. Louis to see a wonderful city, a peer city that I love dearly, horribly impacted by crime and perceptions that's not safe in there in downtown. I mentioned earlier, we had 33,000 people living in downtown Kansas City. You have 6,000 living in St. Louis.
Big difference, yeah.
And the architecture there is so monumental, structured. And they have not had the repopulation of their office buildings like we have had in our marketplace. It just feels unsafe when you're the only person on the street. You're looking for someone that to make you feel more comfortable. That's what our Community Improvement District does. Having 65 folks out in that street every day, you always have someone who can help you, heck, find out where the bus, you know, goes, or how to get to the streetcar, or where a nice restaurant is. So they're really trained really well in those kind of concierge services.
And these are the yellow jackets?
These are the yellow jackets. Yeah. These are paid for by the business community and, and the Central Business District and the River Market. They self-assess to create a budget to provide clean, safe, green, and assistance with the kind of transitional homelessness. And by doing that, by being involved in that marketplace every day, the sidewalks are clean, graffiti's taken down immediately, those kind of, if you're like in a Hollywood movie and you're making, you know, a crime scene, you go in an alleyway and break out a few lights and put up some graffiti and, you know, throw over a dumpster. Well, these are the folks who go back and stand that dumpster up and get rid of that graffiti and work with those property owners, get that window fixed or that light back on. And it's had a profound, I'm not sure there's anything profound positive impact on downtown the River Market. I'm not sure there's anything we've done in 20 years that was more important than taking back the control, the quality of our product. Another thing they do, by the way, is they leverage your investment. So their, our kind of base budget's about $3 million a year. And through just contracting with a wide range of folks from, from MoDOT to the library to the streetcar, you expand that reach by creating this kind of public safety network. So their annual budget's about $6 million a year. Again, I think we have approximately 65, 70 employees. And they're kind of split up between a landscaping team and a maintenance team and a public safety team. We call them ambassadors because they're soft security. They're eyes and ears. They're there to help you, walk you to your car, you know, if it's late in the evening and you're feeling uncomfortable. They're just really there to provide that, that community feel. I would say they set the stage for all the good things that have happened. And I cannot tell you how many compliments I've gotten from both local and visitors on, your ambassador helped me. By the way, just in closing on that, our public safety team is connected by radio to Central Dispatch to the police department.
So they can get the police out there quickly.
And we're huge advocates for increasing the police budget. And we're just successful in getting a V Patrol reinstituted in downtown, which a V Patrol is important because those are officers who aren't driving cars and chasing 911 calls. Those are folks who are working in your community, problem solving. We have an issue here. And they'll work with our CID teams to reclaim that public space. More importantly, they're coming to community meetings, you know, they're participating with different neighborhood organizations, problem identifying and then problem solving and bringing kind of outside police resources to bear, which may not have known about that. You know, that was an issue if they hadn't been kind of eyes and ears for the police department in that environment. Community policing to me is a, is a, is a huge deal. And without the Community Improvement District, this KCPD wouldn't have a working partner. They're also huge advocates for capital investment. I mean, over the years, we've gotten millions of dollars invested in downtown for sidewalks and intersections and curbs and gutters and storm drains that wouldn't have happened but for the squeaky wheel constantly, you know, saying, we need this, we need this, to be competitive. I used to tell people, you know, I mean, think about suburban alternatives. I can go this nice clean parking lot and park in this big building, everything works. Or, you know, back in 2002, downtown, the streetlights didn't work, the curbs were all busted, the storms, you know, how do you sell a classic product when, when that's kind of the environment? And the CID has changed that 180 over the last 15, 20 years.
I'm gonna take you a little bit further south now to the Plaza, where we are right here. What advice would you give to the new Plaza owners and the Plaza Council? Because it strikes me, especially you just talked about 2002, which coincides with about the time you got here. It strikes me that they may be in the same position that you were in when you came to Kansas City from Seattle. So do you have any advice you'd like to offer to them?
Couple things on that. What's really exciting about the streetcar coming down through the Plaza to UMKC, it dictates urban form, because the type of investment that comes along with it. And it also really connects these different parts of our city together. And Mayor Barnes, she had that vision of, you know, string of pearls. And it was, you know, the River, River, Crown Center Plaza. I mean, that was kind of the vision. And we're seeing that happen. So the Plaza area is really at the front end of, I think you put it very appropriately, of organizing, of kind of beginning to inventory their needs assessment, and how can they maximize this new ownership group to benefit the entire neighborhood that, you know, is beyond just the retail, that the new ownership group will be controlling. I think they have a really good team on board. We actually met with them several times, just, you know, providing kind of background support, you know, real basic questions that in that pre-development phase you should be asking. So I think, one, they've got a good team. I think they're putting together a little war chest to develop a, a downtown council type organization that represents the Plaza beyond, you know, just beyond the retail, right? The resident, you have lots of issues with infrastructure, public safety, cleanliness, you know, the same, same type of issues. So I'm very confident that that's gonna happen, that they're gonna get the organization, well, they already have. I mean, they're gonna build on it, create a business plan, a work plan, and have some good positive impact over the years.
Tell us about your wish list. You've just got a full plate, obviously. You have been called a positive visionary. I've, I've seen that in several places. So if you could put on those visionary glasses of yours, what would we see?
I think that what we would see is continued residential growth. See 45,000 people living downtown by the next seven years. That's kind of our projection curve. I can't understate that, the importance of residents. They're 24/7 users of your downtown and of your Plaza and of your kind of Midtown. They bring a political clout with them. Council members and others, you know, listen to voters, listen to residents. So it's really important, I think, from an advocacy perspective. So continued residential growth, completing the South Loop Project. Again, this is a space that will, I mean, think about the gorge between the Crossroads Arts District and the Central Business District, that is I-670. I was chatting with the GM over at Lowe's the other day, and they have this beautiful outdoor space on the north side of the hotel that no one goes to because it's loud, you know, it smells of exhaust, it's noisy. It's, it's not a pleasant environment. Imagine standing there, looking out at a four block, five and a half acre park that had climbing walls.
Changes everything.
Yeah, yeah. Had a playground area, had a dog park, had a Makers Fair kind of entrepreneurial space where startup companies could come and show their Kansas City products and, you know, programmed every day with concerts and, you know, kind of those activities that you want to see in your downtown. It's transformational, it's generational. It is an investment that generation from today, people look back and say, that, that was a good thing. It's one of the few projects I've worked on in 20-plus years here that has universal kind of support.
Interesting.
I mean, think about this. We were able to, to advocate and receive $28.6 million from the federal government for this project. The team has gotten two tranches of funds from the state of, I think it was, they matched the feds, 26.8, and then 15 million additional this year, as well as 5 million tax credits. So you're approaching 50 million from the state for this project. About 25 million private sector with a goal of 50 to be kind of a third, a third, a third is kind of the model on how the funding goes. But what a vote, you know, I mean, think about the composition of the Missouri State Legislature, and that, that they would vote almost unanimously for an urban park.
That was a real win.
Is a, is a real win. Yeah. And it speaks to the project. I mean, people again, see it and kind of intuitively understand, wow, this is something that is transformational. So that's one of my huge priorities. We really have an opportunity, again, like another generational opportunity is the downtown ballpark. You know, streetcar expansion, we've got to go north and south. Before I leave, I'd love to have that first east-west leg.
Yes, yes.
One of the things I'd love to see happen is 18th and Vine get connected down Southwest Boulevard. So you connect these two wonderful heritage districts together for visitors and guests and friends and employees and residents. If that were the first east-west leg, it would, it would actually help support the good investment that's happening today down at 18th and Vine. We're seeing a new residential project went in called 1-9 Vine, a great new retail and office, shared kind of office space at the Vine Street Brewery, first black owned brewery. Yeah, very cool. Great people. As we were talking earlier, the Zhao Bi Arts Center, which is the old attic school, which how many years did that sit, you know, bliding the east side of 18th and Vine? It now becomes a center for arts and culture. It's not only has gallery space, but it has, you know, workspace for artists in our community and nationally. So it's an amazing new facility. Green infrastructure is important to me. We're really a hardscape downtown still. Our tree canopy rates really low. I mean,
That's true. Yeah.
That leads to health issues for people living in neighborhoods, asthma and other kind of things, because we're not, you know, there's not kind of clean enough, there's not enough tree canopy. That's why the South Loop Project's so important to me. You know, five and a half acres of new green space. We're working with the city. And I think another one is to make sure that that's another priority, is to make sure that the South Loop Project is integrated to Barney Alice Plaza.
Right.
Which is kind of the convention center's garage, but on top, they're gonna put a, a park plaza. And one of the neat things about this, if you go to Barney Alice today and you stand at the Marriott and you look south, you'll see the top of Municipal Auditorium and the top of the music hall, they're gonna bring that down to grade. And so suddenly you'll stand at that same viewpoint, and you'll see these, you know, two of the best, you know, Art Deco examples in America, these beautiful, will anchor the southern end of the park. And you'll see the entire facades of the buildings. And, and so we want to make sure that as we put this conservancy in place that will manage the park seven days a week, 24/7. that will manage the park seven days a week, 24/7, which is one of the differences, by the way, because we have lots of wonderful parks and wonderful parks department. This will be proactive, programmed public space. And that's kind of stepping over a new hurdle with, so it's not a passive space with, you know, things in the park that you can do. It'll be a heavily programmed space. And we want to integrate that with Barney Alice Plaza so that they're managed, you know, in coordination. You know, very excited about kind of looking at these green infrastructure ideas of how do we make downtown, again, putting more amenities in the environment, things like dog parks.
Oh, no. People love those.
If we have 33,000 residents, we got 45,000 dogs, you know, that bits. They all need to go somewhere. And we've had some good success in creating some, but you always need more.
You've been here for about 20 years, maybe a little more than 20 years. Came from Seattle and as you said, you had a big job to do. You still do, but I mean, you really had a big job to do when you hit Kansas City. What do you think's been your greatest achievement?
You're right, we have lots of opportunities yet for new investment. So we're kind of only, we're work in progress. We're only kind of halfway to where we need to be and our competition isn't waiting for us. So we need to keep our foot on that gas pedal going forward. You know, I thought about this question, I appreciate you asking. It isn't something specific. For me, I think the greatest accomplishment that the Downtown Council has achieved is creating a kind of common space where people can develop a shared agenda. We all disagree on a lot of things, but we're the 10 we can all agree on and work together, you know, towards making happen. And we really changed the focus from how do we revitalize an old, tired office corps to a much broader focus of how can we create a sustainable, resilient, diverse, mixed-use environment that embraces business, embraces residents, embraces culture and arts and entertainment and sports? And I think we've done that. You know, it creates a sense of pride in our citizens from the whole community around. And to me, that's our greatest accomplishment is that we turn that around from, from, nobody cares about downtown, oh, you know, the old saying you hear all the time, I've had a dollar for every time I heard, oh, it's good enough for Kansas City.